To the board and see what they may entertain the idea of having a drive-through. I explained to them what we did for four one two. And that was a huge increase. Two fifty, three hundred cars came through. And they would actually have to enter. We would greatly need support and volunteers if, if it goes through. They would have to do the same thing as going where the red light is down past the fire hall and then come up here and it would be set up back here in a parking lot and we would funnel them and exit them out. What we also did at that point to inhibit people from trying to cut the line, I stood up the top of this hill. And if it wasn't for our business, they were directed to go down to the light. So a lot of it based on Jordan returning. He said he'll get back to me later this week. At the worst, they may reconsider the walk-through so that the meats and dairy would be supplied. But other than that, because we don't have the numbers, first of all, they're trying. They're trying to get away from doing a drive-through distribution. And so I asked them, I says, well, or then are you gonna stop gateways? He said, oh, no, no. By the reason they're trying to try to cease the drive-throughs because that was supposed to be a temporary plan. But I said to him, I know we have the numbers with the drive-through.
How many people are in the high-rise?
There's seventy, I think there's seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Between seventy and seventy-seven.
No. Do they all come up here?
No.
No.
George's wife will bring some up again.
We have a list on here.
If we set it up in the back of the high-rise.
They wouldn't do it. It was private property, they won't.
Yeah.
Last time, last time we had the drive-through, me and Scott loaded up seventy-some boxes in back of vehicles and took them down there and knocked on everyone's door and put it inside the apartment or left it at the door or put it down in the day room because there's some people down there that watches what goes on. And we told them, this is room two oh three, say, for example, and make sure the two oh three gets it, but make sure that if it gets there too late, put it in the refrigerator, you know, because there's some stuff in there that was spoiled. So they took care of that. But if they drop them off here, I'm sure without a doubt, maybe I'm sticking my neck out of mine, but we can get a truck to take down seventy-some boxes down the high-rise. And that's why we is at two hundred and something.
Yeah, that would have to be after, if we actually, again, everything is still on a planning stage.
I know, I've been, I've been beating this up for last month.
Fifteen years I've been doing this, George. We need to see what they're gonna be willing to do. They may still just consider to do it here. But I volunteered, I have worked with the old food pantry, and then I also worked with Pickcare, while they existed and something I want to say that I'm not going to.
But he was, he was kind of shy, and so I mentioned that the lines would kind of put their name on his sheet. And he says, okay, we can do something then. And I'm not saying that's because of, but I just don't know how audience feel about what, because we'd have to have your blessing to use it over there or use it back here.
So you're basically asking if it's all right to use the locations?
Well, whatever location may be.
I've been doing this for, and which we knew, I was absent the month that a number of two hundred people, family, individuals, had to be met for the drive-through to go through. So I was at this last one, Lisa mentioned it a week ago or so. I said, all right, I'll start doing this. But they already knew for a month, two months before I found out.
I guess once we get it all ironed out.
Right, and Jordan said he'll return my call.
We can get with the lines club and let them.
Yes, greatly need them.
The only thing is, this month is the last, well, December's the last month.
Yes, December fourth.
So if we push this and they need it done between, I don't want to say tomorrow and January first, I don't want to be running around middle of December hoping that we can get a vote from yes.
So, so either way, either way, whether it's at the park building or in the parking lot, you basically need council's blessing, council's approval to use, use the problem.
That would be the right way of doing it, Mike. I, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
You know, I mean, the wrong way of doing it is just set up and, you know, ask for forgiveness after you do it.
Yeah.
You know, but the best thing to do is ask for.
Just to have it covered up, yeah, I get what you're saying. I don't think anybody here would disagree with.
I'll make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion.
Well, we were gonna do it later in the agenda because I have my, he put it on under Lisa's because I filled him in with what I found out and what we needed to do.
All right, yeah, we'll handle that later on in the agenda then.
Okay, perfect, just, you know.
Yep. I take my motion back now.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on. Mayor, Betsy Stevick.
We, Pickcare and police worked a hundred and ninety-two complaints in the month of October. We collected a hundred and twenty-five dollars in fines, that would be parking fines for the most part, no state fines, two hundred and forty dollars in mortgage, and three hundred and forty-four dollars from our magistrate, accounting fifty-two dollars and fifteen cents, and twenty-five dollars in the quality of life. And that is all I have to report.
All right, thank you. Personnel, Dominic.
I would like to make a motion to accept the bids of Jerry Maguire for the lovely pest control service at the Borough Building and Park Building.
Second.
Motion made, second, any questions?
What are those bids?
They were in your package. So basically, he's somebody local, as everybody knows, calls Pest Control, who's sold for a company out in Minnesota, Plunkets, they've been doing it. The, not, they, they came today, but the time before that, the guy that came, not that he did anything wrong, but he told us that he drove the whole way from Ohio and he wasn't gonna do it anymore and he doesn't know that they were gonna get. So you may have seen, Jerry used to work for the Road, and he does pest control as a, as a business now. So he, he sent a proposal to me, basically the same price as what Plunkets charging us. He's local, so I thought now's a perfect time to go with him because we don't know if Plunkets gonna keep sending somebody or not.
I will warn you, Plunkets kept sending me bills for maintenance after I canceled them, so just keep your heads up for that.
Yeah.
Do we know what kind of products he uses in that? Or does he have like a license that he has as an applicant?
He has a pesticide applicator license. I don't know if he listed the products. On his bid sheet.
No, I, I, I mean, I have, I have some experience in the field, so I was just wondering if he's, somebody's.
So for pests, it's roaches, stinging insects, mice and rats, provide four big boxes with paid inspector boards monthly, which is what they do, which is what Plunket does. For the Borough Building would be ninety-one eighty, or the Park Building would be seventy-four
That's no preventative as far as insects?
He would, he would spray once a month.
Is there any type of contract that like, like he's guaranteed to have like a year or anything, or can we, if we find out that his job's not adequate, we can?
Yeah, I'll see, I mean, he just presented the bids, he didn't give me a written contract. I believe that people definitely come up with something or see if he has a standard contract. I know he does, blocks his pizza, and he's done some for some local residents too, so.
All right. I just wanted, you know, have an out if, you know, that's not doing good enough. Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
I would also like to make an motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-two four requesting a statewide LSA grant of four hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authorities for replacing the steps between Fifth and Sixth Street.
Second.
Motion on the floor made, and second, any questions?
Yeah.
Can I create a reason?
We had to request that amount of money to replace them and not fix them. I'm still stuck on this, they can be fixed.
We decided that the easiest thing to do would request the money to replace them because what's happened a lot with these LSA grants is they don't give you a full amount because they try and spread off the money.
Okay, so it's an area we don't get the whole thing.
Yeah, so like if they give us, if we request four hundred and fifty-one thousand, so, you know, let's be honest, I hope this doesn't cost that much, but the contractors, what we've seen in bids, especially with these grant stuff, you just have, the prices are all replacements, same concrete. So we make sure you're covered for that, okay? But if they come back and say, oh, we got, this is a nice grant for four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, here a hundred thousand dollars.
That's, then we can fix, so we don't have to replace them.
Then we can talk about what can we do with the hundred thousand dollars to accomplish the project.
Okay, thank you.
So the four hundred and fifty-one, we're replacing everything, the rails.
Yeah, because I'm like half a million dollar steps is ridged.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, I, I would hope that it wouldn't cost that much, but, you know.
My question was, are we re- replacing everything or?
That's, that's what we're gonna ask.
Try for replacement, if not, if they give us less money, we'll, there's more to offer from there. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all the business I have, Mr. President.
All right, streets, George.
Okay, motion to approve change order number two by Curry and Kipple for the net reduction of, Mike, I got three fifty-eight period, forty period, got three hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, that's all.
Okay. This relates to the store line and unused quality supply.
Second.
Motion made, second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing.
Motion to approve change order number three by Curry and Kipple for a net increase of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. This relates to additional paving.
Second.
Motion made, second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve change order number one for the twenty-four, the twenty-two forty-four paving program for additional paving on Sycamore Alley in the amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion made, second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve paving application number one to Albronny Industries for the twenty-two forty-four paving program in the amount of a hundred and seven thousand, seventy-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. This is to be paved from the capital funds.
Second.
Motion made, second, any questions? Is that all in the up and up done? That was all completed to, or satisfactory?
Yeah, we, we'll do a final walkthrough and we'll have a punch list.
Okay.
But they just got done with the paving last week, so.
Okay.
What area did they pave?
What's that?
What area did they pave?
Well, there's a few streets, I don't, I don't.
Five hundred block of Twelfth, and then from Twelfth to the border on Highland.
Oh, okay.
They did the seven hundred block of Eleventh, they did Pickaren Avenue, and then that section of Sycamore Alley was, it was in real bad shape.
Okay.
Was there any place else, guys, we called?
Twelfth, you have Twelfth, right?
Twelfth, yeah.
All right, good deal. Motion made, whoa, whoa, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, go ahead.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two forty requesting a CD BG grant for Hillside Avenue storm for repairs, materials only in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion on the floor made, second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have.
You got one more there.
One more.
You got one at the top.
You got all the action this week.
Okay. Motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-two forty requesting a statewide LSA grant of six hundred and nineteen dollars and four hundred and seventy-five from the Commonwealth Financing Authorities for bringing out and getting reconstruction phase states.
Second.
Motion made, second, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
No, not, Mr. President.
Sounds good, parks and rec, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-three twenty-two four requesting a CD BG grant for Working Street Park in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand, sixty dollars.
Second.
Motion made, second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Harvest Festival, Rick Court, we had a few more kids than we had the previous year, but still very low attendance, so I'd like to see more children out. I don't know how we get more children to come, but I even had Tara ride around with flyers to hand out to the kids, so I don't know if we just don't have that age group of children or parents just aren't bringing them out. Overall, it was great. Old Fashioned Christmas discussion on Saturday, December seventh is the Old Fashioned Christmas. Santa, who happens to be in the room, hello, will be, will be arriving at six o'clock.
I don't know, I heard maybe, I, I heard would you.
I'm confirming, I'm confirming right now, Santa is here. Yeah, Santa will be here at six o'clock. We do have some volunteers from, what is the name of the church? Why can't I think right now?
Assembly of God.
Assembly of God, thank you. Some volunteers from the Assembly of God, they're going to come down, they're gonna have a craft for the kids, and back in the corner, they're going to be playing Charlie Brown Christmas on a very small TV. So weather pending, that might work out really nicely. We did secure the truck and the trailer, those aren't wrecking down right. To use, did you, did you look into that perhaps, Jim, you'd be able to put some wider railings?
Yes, we, we, yep. We're good to go.
Fantastic, okay. We were not able to get the trailer we usually use, apparently it's been winterized this year.
Which we don't understand.
Any idea? Okay, and the next discussion, which we have talked about before, is filthy by the Pittsburgh Kings Youth Football Team. I'm still gonna stick to my guns and say, I'm not interested in having them come back next year. I don't know if that needs to be a motion or not.
I would think you probably should do a motion to direct me to write them a letter.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to have the Borough Manager write a letter to the Pittsburgh Kings, telling them we are not inviting them back next year.
Wouldn't it be better to wait and see who pays us?
If they apply.
Yeah, because they, they need to apply for next year, right?
Not yet, but they usually do that in, in February, March, and, I mean, I was over there a little today, and they have their concession stand pretty well cleaned up, it's not a hundred percent, and they have, they still have equipment in the, in the back room of it, so I think you're better off at least giving them that notice.
Do we have the keys?
If, if you know you're, you're not gonna do it.
Try to give them the time.
So they can find other.
Do we have the keys? Did they get the keys back?
I agree with us. No, they haven't turned them in yet because they left things clean.
We still have, we still have one of their deposit checks?
Yes, they, they always take a good month, month and a half off before they go back to clean, so I'll, I'll email them tomorrow and ask them when they're gonna be their final cleanup.
Has that been winterized, Jim?
I think they have, they've been winterizing, yes.
All right.
They have like three grills sitting off their food.
So we have a motion on the floor to direct Mike to get a letter sent out to the Kings?
Second.
Motion made, second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, parking lot used by the Pittsburgh Food Bank, so do I need to make a motion for that too, or are we just, is that a permission thing? I don't know how that works.
Well, I just figured, the reason I inquired and was talking to some of you guys was because some of that's the borough, so I figured get permission since there's a division.
Whether, whether.
We're not really, council's not really responsible for doing this, I just have to have that authority.
Whether it's over by the park building as a walk-up distribution or in the parking lot as a drive-through distribution, I would like to give the food bank the permission to.
Second.
Motion made, second. And I, any questions on that? All in favor?
Sorry, Jim.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I don't know if everybody is aware, but the stove over at the Park Building, the one with the griddle top, is not working, has not been working since the women had their pancake breakfast at the women's club.
The, the griddle, the griddle and the stove top worked in the one side of the oven works. It's, it's a double oven, so it's the one oven that's not working, and the partner's ordered for it to be fixed, but in the meantime, the Women's Club did offer, there was a letter in their package, they're willing to pay up to five thousand, and I've been told, I didn't get anything official, that the order of the Eastern Star would be willing to kick
Six hundred?
Other than it being old, and once it's fixed, I don't know that there's anything wrong with that, but if they're willing to pay for a new one, the women have to pitch in some, because they, Patty said she went up to TNT and looked at them, and it was right around the five to fifty-five hundred dollar mark. I haven't gone, I haven't gone out to look yet, I don't know, nothing really about.
That's commercial, I mean, that's a commercial product.
You said, you said their money to donate up to five and then possibly Eastern Stars, an extra additional, so that would cover, right? The whole cost.
And we still have about twenty-eight thousand remaining in our book.
Other equipment wise, I think everything else over there is good.
Everything else is, is good, right?
Doesn't a refrigerator get water at the bottom of it at now?
Not, not, not anything I've ever been.
I think it was the freezer wasn't closing or people were stuffing it and not closing it correctly. That's usually what ends up happening.
Do you want to make, do you want to make this in the form of a motion, even if it's going to be donated money, I would suggest to do so.
Do we have to make a motion to accept the donation? I don't think you.
I don't think so. I just want everybody to be aware that, that this is what's going on, we'll get, we'll get prices and get the, get the best price and get the best stove.
Penn, Penn and T should have done a strip, that was probably.
Where's that at, Bill?
Right, strip, it's on, right on Penn.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anything else, Lisa?
Um, no, wasn't that enough?
Decoration.
The fence, yeah.
They were so fast.
Oh, yes, yeah, that was, that was taken off again.
No, it's going there.
No, it's not, I skipped over it. I don't know how anybody else feels about this, so we, we talked about doing the house decoration contest that they've done in the past. There's a lot of little intricacies that we could discuss about this, is, you know, what, what would we use as a prize? Would we have like one from each district? Would there only be one in each district? Who's gonna judge? I mean.
I think one in each district would maybe motivate more people.
And how do we get the word out about this? Because you know, somebody's gonna say, I didn't know anything about it, because that's exactly what's gonna happen.
When does the Pickcare, Patty put out her paper, it was already out?
Already out.
Facebook, stick it on the marquee?
I don't know, well, I don't know if anybody's gonna do extra decoration because we're having this contest. So I feel if you just.
A surprise for whoever did.
Yeah.
Wow, you won.
You won a gift card, congratulations, I don't know.
And I think as far as judges go, wouldn't it be just?
I was told it used to be on light up night, and Mike and I kind of discussed this, we kind of got away from doing light up night because it used to be a thing like on the kids' Christmas party was we would turn on the tree and then it was light up night. Well, we don't really do that anymore. And I made it earlier.
The tree's grown up front, huh?
Um, it's not growing there any longer, but we do get a tree to put there. Yeah, I don't know when all that happens either.
One of the, one of the things that you might want to consider for the prize, if it's not, I, I don't know, you're gonna do one per district, if you're just gonna do a first place and a second place, you could do, you could do a fifty dollar credit on your electric bill.
I was thinking, honestly.
That's interesting.
That's a nice thing.
Because they're using their, yeah, they're using their electric to power the lights.
That's an excellent idea.
See, now I'm putting up extra lights, Mike, see what you do. Yeah, does anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I, I don't like that idea.
You like the idea? Okay, so now we need to pick a date for somebody to go out and judge, or do we not do that and we just, if we're not making it formal, we could just go out any night, but.
I, I would say.
I would have the police be the judge because they're the ones going up and down the streets.
I would say like something, you know, get somebody like Tara and maybe Chief to go out and just, you know, pick their favorite too or something like that.
I think Nick, you know, not only, I mean, he's driving around here today, Nick and, Nick and Mark are running around at nighttime.
Yeah.
It could be kind of rude about it. I mean.
Well, yeah, I like that idea, actually. We have both of them put in a vote and we have two of the police out and put in a vote, then there's no favoritism.
That's a, that's a good idea.
Those people have their houses decorated by like forty-five.
I was thinking the, I was thinking the seventh week of December, I don't know. I want to put mine up tomorrow, but it's.
I was thinking like the twentieth timeframe, but that might be.
Okay. But like, yeah, so we need to pick like an end date though.
Yeah, so I was saying the twentieth maybe would be the end date.
And we could drop it off on Christmas Eve as a present.
Yeah. Santa Claus.
So the twentieth would be the end date.
The twentieth is the end date.
And the prizes. Are we doing one per district or are we doing what?
I would recommend a first and second place.
Does the first and second throw up the whole town?
No, we need to do a second and third, I'm sorry. It's really good.
Okay, one through three.
I'm sorry, I know I made an extra one, but.
What's the third place do? You try?
No. Just do a ten dollar credit.
Can I speak real quick? So, so I, I like this idea, but what about adding the commercial businesses in it too?
I would love to see all the commercial businesses decorate their windows.
To say.
We could do two in the community and one for a business, we could do that.
All right.
You good with that?
Fine, buddy.
I'd hope so.
So now we have to get the businesses to participate, that's.
Yes.
That's your job, because you brought it up.
Me.
When you're around and talking to everybody. I would say Kelly at Family Tourism.
Yeah, quick learn. Do you want to make that in the form of a motion, Lisa?
I have no idea, do I?
I would just for the prizes, so that.
But what do we have to decide on this first? What are we doing as a first?
Twenty-five. That sound good? Fifty, twenty-five, ten?
And we are allowed to do that? We're allowed to give somebody a gift towards their electric bill?
If you're doing, including a business, like do you have them a separate one?
Yeah, we have a separate one for the businesses.
Yeah, okay, so we're doing.
So fifty, fifty, twenty-five?
Fifty, fifty, twenty-five, or, or fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five.
So we're just doing first and second, quick guys?
Yeah.
First and second in a business one.
Yep.
So.
Fifty, fifty, twenty-five.
Now, if there's only two businesses, is there only one winner?
Only one winner.
Yeah, there's only one winner.
Participation trophies.
The second to do their last place.
They're gonna get fifty dollars on.
So give me this again, how many resident places?
Two, a fifty and a twenty-five.
One, two, three.
And then one. And then one?
One commercial or a, uh.
One commercial.
Storefront or.
Yeah, window.
And that'll be fifty.
If we're doing one is two and then a.
Yep.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to have the home decoration contest as a first prize winner of fifty dollars off their electric bill. A second prize winner of twenty-five off their electric bill. And a business owner to have fifty dollars off their electric bill. That would be concluded on December twentieth.
Within Pick Karen.
Yeah, no. Within the contest.
I was aware of that.
All right, motion?
Seconded.
Seconded, thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thanks for putting up with me, I'm done now.
You're welcome, Bill?
Motion to pay the bills as presented?
Second.
Motion to pay the bills as presented, made and seconded, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?[1767.94]